Okay. We will call the February 8, 2023 School Committee meeting to order. We will begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings by reading the mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Sarah Ward.
Lisa Sheldon.
Victoria Saldana.
Barry Necto.
Ingrid Allerdy.
Midora Champagne. We went counterclockwise. So the next item on the agenda would be public comment, where we open up the floor to someone from the public who has something within our purview to speak about, going once, twice. No public comments. All right, moving on. Correspondence, of which we have -- that's none, correct? Of which we have none. Lying through. Next, we have the School Committee Chair Report, which will be brief. I believe we have some gifts that we are going to be reviewing and voting on. So we have an attached spreadsheet, which is on the other side. We are looking at gifts from Tara Fritz and Kelly O'Leary in the amounts of $50 and $40 respectively. These are donations to the HOD. These are just wonderful parent donations. Awesome. So we will be looking for a motion to accept the gifts as stated.
I'll make a motion to accept the gifts as stated for HOD. Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you very much to Tara Fritz and Kelly O'Leary. Awesome. Concluding my portion of the evening's festivities, we will move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Great. So to start tonight, we have three members from AI3 here to present an update on the Norfolk Public Schools feasibility study. As you know and as public is aware, we have been struggling with significant space challenges for a number of years that are exacerbated by the rapid expansion and development in town. We are anticipating a kindergarten class probably upwards of 160 next year. Current enrollment stands at 153. We have added a number of classes over the past few years. As you're aware, at the HL of Day, we had to repurpose the music room. That's currently a special education classroom. We've lost the technology and science lab at the Freeman Kennedy. We've had to make adjustments that don't fit our educational goals and mission in order to accommodate the growth in enrollment. So the town generously voted last year to fund moving forward with a full feasibility study. And we have Troy Randall, Justin DeBolt, and Mike Perrello -- did I get it right? Wow. From AI3. And they're going to give you an update of the progress to date and where we're headed in next steps. So welcome and thank you for coming tonight.
Fantastic. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
If I stand, is that okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Allerdy. Hi, my name is Troy Randall, AI3 architects. Many of you know us. Justin Tebow, Mike Perrello. We are AI3. And if you could just go to the next slide, Justin. So if you don't know us, we have been around about 25 years, nearly 100 projects in the Commonwealth and beyond, made up collectively with our consultants, over 75 engineers, architects, and specialists that will be part of the project as it moves forward. Tonight, we want to talk about the process, the beginning stages of the process. We plan, over the next several months, to be in front of you a few times at least and give you an update. There's been a lot of work that has been going on behind the scenes with the folks from Norfolk and the planning process. Tonight, we'll give you a snapshot of what that plan looks like from now until town meeting and also some of the things that we've been going through related to existing conditions analysis, the educational program, and educational capacity, student capacity as well. So I'm going to turn it over to these guys and then go through the details of what we're doing today.
Thanks, Troy. So to give a quick sort of overall roadmap, basically, how are we going to get from now to May town meeting? What you see on the screen and what was in your packet that was sent out is really breaking down the next three months that the design team working with the district is really going to engage in. So just working right down the list, establishing working group meetings. So that is critical to get decisions in an informed time to allow the design team to keep moving forward. So what we've done is we've established these meetings to occur every other week to keep the process moving forward. So you can see those dates listed on the calendar. Next item down, School Committee meeting tonight. This is the first of three that we've identified, next one being March 1, and the third one being April 11. And really, that's to bring everybody along, to update you on the process, the results, sort of the decisions, and the findings of what we're doing behind the scenes because we're continuing to move on through the process. Moving down, Community Forums. So the team has identified two community forums to really give the public in the town a venue to ask questions, provide feedback, and really become involved with the project itself. So the dates identified, March 14 and April 27. And these are strategically located. So the first one being the middle of March allows enough information to be developed to have a fruitful conversation with the town. And then the one in April is a week and a half prior to town meeting. Again, another chance, another venue for the community to come out, ask their questions prior to the vote. Handful of other items, Select Board Meeting, we're targeting updating them early April. And then at the very bottom, the Advisory Board, we understand to review the Warren article. Final date to be determined. We'll engage them when appropriate, but that is on our radar and will be included where necessary. So that's sort of where we're headed. Where we've been, as Troy mentioned, a lot of work has been happening, some of the completed items. Existing building systems analyzed, so mechanical, structural, plumbing, electrical. All those items have been analyzed within this facility. Site analysis has been completed. Traffic study counts have also been completed, and that's going to inform the final traffic report that is forthcoming. Existing program spaces confirmed. So actually, Troy and myself walked through every single space in HOD in Freeman Kennedy and confirmed the use. Who uses the space? And if there's any modifications based on the planes that we were using, if there was, we updated accordingly. Educational visioning sessions. Mike will talk more about that, but really, it's re-engaging the district to ensure that the visioning sessions that have occurred in the past are still relevant. Existing space summaries generated. So after Troy and I walked through the buildings, we updated the space summary. If you're not familiar with that, it's an inventory of every space within the facility, quantity and size. And really, what that does, it allows us to analyze the program space size. So it identifies if there's enough quantity, enough rooms, but also the size of the room, if the room is appropriately sized for the function. So all of this has been happening sort of behind the scenes, and it's sort of influencing all of the decisions and process moving forward. So I'm going to actually turn it over to Mike, who's going to talk a little bit about the program update, and then you can talk specific spaces.
Hi, everybody. So again, I'm Mike Perrello. I'm an educational planner on the team. I was a former educator for 17 years before I started doing planning work, really with the idea of my role is to work with the architects to really make sure that curriculum, instruction, learning, and the environment itself are in full alignment throughout this process. So back in early December, we, along with a group of about 40 faculty and staff from the district, met in targeted groups. So instead of having a really large global visioning session, we broke the sessions into more intimate listening sessions focused on these areas: early childhood, art, tech, and STEAM integration, general education and teacher planning, and special education. Really, the focus and the goal was to vet all of the work that had been done in the previous feasibility study, but then also to unpack everything that was in that study and take it even a step further to make sure that we looked at everything that was your vision in the existing facilities, but also for the future. Really, that gave us the opportunity to look holistically in case there were programs that, you know, were no longer in the building because of growing enrollment, spaces and programs that wanted to be shifted around, just to give this as an opportunity to better align space and teaching. A few of the highlights from the visioning sessions was the idea of early childhood being a really play-based and centers-based environment and experience, so spaces to support that. For art, tech, and STEAM integration, this vision came up that STEAM would have its own program space, but also would have opportunities to integrate and embed that programming with general education, so project space that would also support that. General education and teacher planning, the idea of collaboration kept coming up. A lot of collaborative spaces or teacher workspaces that were in Freeman Kennedy that were taken over because of growing enrollment and used for another purpose, that spaces like that went back in. And then obviously, spaces to support special education, gross motor development, sensory experiences in pre-K, indoors and outdoors. The next piece about educational visioning planning that I worked on was really looking at the enrollment projections provided by Nezdeck and then how that impacts the existing buildings and the proposed addition. So all of this information that I'm going to share with you in the next two slides is directly from Nezdeck's enrollment forecast that was updated on May 2, 2022. What I really want you to notice is this data point right here, five years out for the school year 2026, 2027. Typically, when you look at enrollment studies and you look at how that impacts a building, you look three to five years out because those are the most accurate years. So we looked at the 26, 27 year, and that enrollment projection is as follows. For pre-K, there's expected to be 64 students. That 124 number you see, what that represents is the fact that, on average, there's approximately around 60 pre-K students that are on that waitlist. So what is the opportunity to add additional pre-K classrooms to support more pre-K students? Not necessarily that we're going to have a universal pre-K, but when possible, to support more. K to 2 is 461 students, and grades 3 to 6, that's 688 students. This 525 number, which you don't see over there, is a combination of this K to 2 number, and that's 64 pre-K number. So enrollment projections and analysis in terms of education is looked at in two different ways. One, capacity of the building, the existing and proposed, and then also it's looked at from a class count need perspective. So when you look at building capacity, the way that that's determined is looking at the number of classrooms that are existing in the district times the district's policy target size per grade level classroom or the 10-year average class size per classroom. The reason that I use both of these numbers is it gives us a range of the smallest amount of students and the largest amount of students that really typically we would see. So Freeman Kennedy, the current capacity is 486 to 594. That's for grades 3 to 6. The proposed capacity would be 105 because there'd be seven pre-K classrooms in the addition, and that's seven times 15 students per class. For grades 3 to 6, the proposed capacity would be 594 to 726. This number is calculated assuming six classrooms at the grades 3 to 6 level. You can see how the proposed capacity works into that projected enrollment number. So again, the projected enrollment for 26, 27 school year has 64 pre-K students and 688 students in grades 3 to 6. The proposed capacity, that number is within range of those proposed capacity numbers for pre-K and grades 3 to 6. When you look at HL of Day, their current capacity, there's 25 classrooms, grade level classrooms in that building. They're used currently for grades pre-K to 2. So their current capacity is 396 to 459. When you look at the proposed capacity, you'll notice that it's only K to 2 now because that assumes that the pre-K program has moved to Freeman Kennedy, and now the K2 program can be supported up to 475 students because you have those four open classrooms. Again, you can see the 461 projected enrollment for grades K to 2 nicely falls within that proposed capacity. What this really tests is, do you have enough capacity in the building to support the number of students you have and the number of classrooms that you need? And this study shows that, yes, this moving pre-K over to Freeman Kennedy and building the addition would support that. Looking at it a different way is looking at it specifically at the class count need. So the class count need is calculated by looking at the five-year forecast enrollment by grade level and then dividing that number by the district policy target size. So essentially, you're doing the opposite of this arithmetic that's up here. So Freeman Kennedy, there's currently 27 grades 3 to 6 classrooms. We're proposing seven pre-K classrooms and a total of 33 rooms for grades 3 to 6. That's taking the 27 existing and then adding those six. If you look at the range of class count need, and again, the lower number and the higher number represent the district target classroom size based on your policy and then that 10-year average. So you can see the range of classrooms for pre-K would be 4 to 8, and we're proposing the seven. So that falls nicely in the range. And then the range of class count need for grades 3 to 6 is 31 to 39, and you have 33 classrooms, again, falling nicely in the middle of that range. So there's definitely room for some growth, for, you know, if there's a bubble year, things like that that always happen. That way, you wouldn't have to, you know, pull art back onto a cart and things like that. And then HL of Day, finally, again, there's 25 classrooms, grades pre-K to 2. You'll still keep those 25 classrooms, but now they'll only be allocated to K to 2, and you have a need for somewhere between 24 and 29. So again, you fall nicely within that range.
So after Mike went through and worked to identify, okay, where is the range? Where is the ideal range for classrooms? We, as designers, started looking at, okay, what spaces needed to be added or replicated within the addition? What spaces can be taken back at HOD that were previously lost? So looking at it from a space standpoint, we really see the program spaces falling into three buckets, as you will. The first being previously lost spaces or spaces the district repurposed to meet enrollment demands. Second bucket is the pre-K program moving from HOD over to here, to Freeman Kennedy. And then the third is new program needed to accommodate the increased enrollment. So breaking those down into some examples, as Dr. Allerdy mentioned previously, for instance, at HOD, music room, initially designed as a music room, is now a special education classroom. The computer lab, maker space, now a general education classroom. There's a handful of spaces over there that had to be modified just to meet the current capacity with the overcrowding. Freeman Kennedy, previously used science labs, now a special education classroom. The teacher lunch workroom and workspace is now also a special education classroom. So what we would be doing is regaining those spaces, adding those spaces back into the project as they originally intended, but then were lost because of the increased enrollment. Second bucket is really what happens with the pre-K element. So that is the pre-K classrooms moving over, the seven pre-K classrooms that Mike mentioned, also including the pre-K, the special education component, all those required items for that component, as well as the administration, the nurse, all of that, the pre-K items needed would be included in the addition here. And then, third bucket, really, the new program spaces that are needed just because of that enrollment increase. The six general education classrooms, another ELL classroom, and two special education classrooms. To keep proportionate for special education population, it's anticipated that two additional special education classrooms will be needed based on those projection enrollments. So these are the spaces that we're working with and really the reasoning for why they're included in the project. Most of them are making up for lost space or to support either the pre-K or the new enrollment projection. So next steps, we're continuing to update that space summary. So I mentioned that Troy and I walked through an inventory of all the spaces. That is of the existing. We're also generating a space summary for the new building. That identifies quantity of rooms, that identifies the size of the rooms. So there will be one for the new building. Developing floor plans based on quantity of rooms, the size of the rooms, and really how that configuration connects within the existing facility. Develop the site plan. So now that we've honed in on the size of the building, the quantity of classrooms, the needs of the actual building, now we're looking at the site. How can the site support the building? Looking at the systems analysis, so I mentioned, the team has analyzed mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all those systems within the building. Now that we're ironing down on the actual size of the facility, we can further evaluate, okay, what is needed to update system-wise to support that new portion? And then, as I mentioned previously, finalizing the traffic report based on the information and the counts that have already been gathered. We're working to finalize that to identify a traffic impact analysis. So again, high-level overview, a lot of moving parts right here. Next meeting, we're scheduled in front of you folks here, is the March 1 meeting. But at this point, you can open it up. Questions, comments? I'll turn it over to Dr. Allerdy.
Questions, comments from the committee?
Well, you know me, I always wait. Just waiting. So I'll start with an easy one first. So do you think by the next School Committee meeting that you'll have the floor plans done and whatnot? I'd be really curious to see if you think you could reconfigure wherever this building, you know, however, you could fit all that wish list in this area? I'm really curious about that.
Yes, we're working through that. It may not be finalized, but you will see floor plans.
Like a general?
Yep, you will see floor plans at the next meeting, how everything fits. We're working through because it's not just the full addition. We're also reclaiming some of those spaces back, so we'll identify those as well. But yes, you will see floor plans at the next meeting.
Okay. And then just from my own understanding, because sometimes, being a School Committee member, people will ask me questions, so I want to ensure that I understand exactly what's going on. The projections that you made, over the 10-year, you took the middle, and you said, this is what we're basing it on, and we have like a confidence interval, right, of when we find the mean or of what classes we think we're going to need. Past, and I understand, like Norfolk is going through a bubble right now, right? We're like growing, 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 but all towns kind of slow their growth. Is it typical, like you just look at the 10-year and you don't do anything bigger than that? Because my concern is that people will come back, like let's say we continue to grow, and it's like, oh my God, in eight years, oh, we got to build on another school, like, and then people are like, why didn't you do it in the first place? So is that typical, that this is what you do for schools? You kind of do the 10-year range?
Yeah, so. Yeah, either way.
Or you agree with me.
The most accurate forecast projection is the five-year range. Because at that point, if there's going to be any development in town, you can really project it. It takes time to build. It takes time for permitting and stuff like that. Anything beyond that, it's a little bit of speculation because who knows if the permits are going to go through? Who knows if they're actually going to construct it? So the most accurate enrollment projection is that five-year window. So that's why, back on this slide here, that is the line that is targeted for enrollment. Anything beyond that?
Okay.
Right, it's often, oftentimes, it's interesting, you'll either have people that say, look at the highest number, build to that number because we're already out of capacity at our new high school, you know, versus, well, no, why are you looking at the highest number? That's probably a bubble year, and we don't have the money, let's not build too big, and then we're going to have classrooms that are empty. But to Justin's point, that the reason that we also look at that five-year number is because when you look at even things like real estate trends, you know, the market could completely turn, and you never know what happens. And so a lot of times, projections are, and studies are even done before you hit that 10-year mark again, and that's why that three to five window is so important. But the reason that I study the class count range and not just the enrollment capacity, or the building capacity, rather, is to know how much buffer do we have? And to think, when we look at reallocating and regaining space in the existing building and then building the new, to build in enough flexibility that if you need a project space to become a classroom, that it has the capability to do that because that's efficient design. But also credit you folks too, as a School Committee and Dr. Allerdy, with the fact that you did update your enrollment projections with Nezdeck in 2022 from the original. And that continual update is really helpful for you, helpful for everybody. So that's a very proactive approach to the process. So kudos to the group for that.
And Jen, I would just say also, one other thing, when Nezdeck does their enrollment projections, and as Justin and Mike said, they look at the first five years as the most accurate because they will only consider the potential enrollment impact of projects that are under construction. So they will not, I mean, Norfolk hasn't made a decision on how they're developing Southwood. That project is not in these projections because factors such as the real estate market, the mortgage rates, the number of units, the size of the units, whether there's green space, all those impact the yield of students. So when you're looking at, there looks like there's a spike in 2026, the numbers beyond that don't include any pending projects that may come on. So the recommendation is to update these projections in three years. And it's very likely you'll see those numbers increase if market conditions hold. But again, they can't make an enrollment estimate without knowing the number of units, the size of units, how it's going to be laid out, because those are the factors that drive student yield.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying that most likely, our town will continue to grow. And if we, I don't want to be in a position, four years from now, being like, oh my goodness, we are back at it, and why didn't we do it in the first place? And that, I just want a very cohesive, which I received, thank you.
So I'm able to understand it and go back. So when people say, okay, Jen, on School Committee, you really messed up, I'm not, you know, da-da-da-da-da, I'm going to be like, well, you know, Nezdeck, we only could do this, and then, you know, we, you know, it's not really accurate beyond five years.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm very comfortable. I've had a number of briefings, extraordinarily thorough. Great. All right. Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I will get back to you, Justin, with the data you were looking for.
Perfect.
All right, great. And we'll see you March 1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right. Next on our agenda tonight, we have Dr. Tupper and Alicia Whitehead here to talk about preschool programming and tuitions for the coming school year. Just as a reminder, the School Committee is responsible for voting to approve the tuition rates. So whoever would like to come to the mic first, kind of walk through that, please do.
Sure.
Yeah, you can come together. You just might need a second chair.
Okay. Yeah, that's totally fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Alicia Whitehead is our lead preschool teacher, and she and I are here tonight to talk just a little bit about our preschool programming. And we also like to highlight some of the changes that we're proposing. And since this is a tuition-based program, we also talk a little bit about how that impacts, you know, tuition. So we have three changes that we want to highlight for the committee tonight. And just a little, you know, back information, preschool programming is driven by special education legislation, and so we are mandated at the age of three, when students turn three years old, to consider our child find obligations. And so if there is any suspect of special education needs when students turn three, we go through a really close collaborative working relationship with families and with early intervention to help determine whether or not they do qualify for special education programming. And as Mike indicated tonight, we have an array of special education classrooms, and we take whether or not they do qualify for special education programming. And as Mike indicated tonight, we have an array of special education classrooms, and we take up to 15 students. So we have typically, we have eight typically peer partners, and we have seven special education students. And those are the ratios that make up our preschool programming. And so we currently have a two-day, half-day program, a three-day, half-day program, a four-and-a-half-day program, a full-day program, and then we have a sub-separate program for students who have higher needs. And so next year, we're proposing some changes. Do you want to highlight the changes?
Sure.
You can talk a little.
So we've had an increase in our three-year-old population particularly. And so we'd like to add another three-day, three-year-old program that will, where the peer partners will attend three days and the students on IEPs will attend four days. In order to accommodate that, because of, you know, space constraints, we have shifted one of our four-year-old programs from this year to accommodate the three-year-olds coming in the morning. And then the shift is the four-year-olds will come in the afternoon. They will come Monday through Thursday for the peer partners. And then students on IEPs will also come to a sub-separate portion on Friday mornings.
So this is program that we've had in the past. In the past couple of years, we transitioned to what we call like a hybrid program, which was two full days and two half-days, three half-days for our four-year-olds. And we did that. And we typically eb, and our program ebbs and flows based on the needs of our students as well. So this year, you know, we wanted to be able to expand our programming a little bit more for the community. And so this would be able to do that and meet the needs of our students. Any questions about the proposed changes? Sarah?
Yeah. I think on your spreadsheet with the prices, the first one, the two-day tuition for the two-day, half-day morning program, I think it got switched. I think you have your
Yeah, so it didn't actually. And thank you for bringing that up. That was one of the changes that we highlighted. So this year, we've had a two-hour and 45-minute two-day program, our integrated program. And our special education students stayed an additional 45 minutes. We want to go back to providing an hour of non-integrated time for special education students, which impacts the tuition rate. So even with the proposed 5% increase, which we may or may not decide to do, you know, it does look a little bit lower. And that's the reason why.
Okay. My brain was just doing the math. And I was like, that doesn't matter.
Yeah, exactly. I know. We all did that, like quick second take on that. Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out. Yeah.
I think one of the things that Dr. Tupper and the preschool team do a really good job of is working closely with early intervention, projecting student needs, looking at the needs of the community, and changing the program every year to make sure that we're providing the best service to our special education students and trying the best we can within those parameters to meet the needs of the community. So I know every year it's a little complicated because we're looking this half-hour shifts.
Yeah.
But it's really done thoughtfully and with the intent of providing services that meet the needs of all of our students and to the best capacity we have with space constraints, the community as a whole. So do you want to talk about the recommended 5% tuition increase for our program?
Sure. When we came last year, you know, we talked about, we considered potentially a tuition increase and we decided against it. And, you know, our goal is always to make, you know, the preschool program accessible to our families. So we put that up there this year for the school committee to consider. If you'd like to consider a 5% increase, we just wanted you to see what the implications would be. I think it's been three years since we've considered any kind of increase at all to our tuition and programming. But again, our goal is to, you know, have accessibility for our community. So, yeah.
So it's a conservative recommendation
Yes.
in terms of tuition increase. It does keep us competitive with the market, but we're certainly not the highest program out there. It's not because we don't have the best quality preschool, because we absolutely do. But again, the goal to try to make it affordable for families and to bring in as many students as we can. They're recommending a more moderate tuition increase of 5%. And again, that would be about 1.5% per year because it was three years ago since we last looked at this.
It was before Thomas.
It was pre-pandemic.
And you hadn't increased for like five years prior to that.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. Yep. And when we did the increase last time, there, it was a 10% increase, but it was a small, yeah, it was a small number. It didn't have a huge impact. At that time, we were trying to be a little bit more, you know, aligned with the area preschools were. Yeah, we were trying to right ourselves a little bit. But yeah, so it's just something to consider.
I think it's fair. You're getting more and more kids. I mean, and you have to buy more materials. And so I think it's very fair.
Maybe we should move and then we can talk about it.
I was just commenting. I was not discussing. You made comments about Thomas.
You're right, I did. I'm speaking out of turn. Is that, are you, can we move forward with the, okay, so we'd be looking for a motion, I think, to
So moved.
Okay, to vote. Any further discussion?
Well, a second.
Any further discussion after the second? All right. All those in favor of the 5% increase to preschool fees?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Because registration starts very soon and we'd like to have the amount posted. It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow registration opens.
Just in time.
We had it all up and ready to go.
Yeah. Yeah. Excellent. So great. Open tomorrow, February 9th, and closes March 9th. Yeah. And then we also have a child find screening in the middle of March as well, on a Friday afternoon, I think, March 17th, 12?
17th, yes.
Right. So anyhow, and that's been publicized as well. So it'll be in the paper. It's at the library. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, the next item in your pocket is just informational, as you all received a letter. And I did send a letter out to the community as well as to the staff at both buildings and to Town Hall and the SLAB board. Ms. Balfour will be, has announced her retirement. She will be retiring in June at the end of this school year after 51 years of service to the Norfolk Public Schools. Just a little in terms of her history, Linda started as a second grade teacher and then transitioned to be the special education coordinator for the district. Eventually, in, I think it was 1990, she left the classroom and became a full-time administrator. She was a part-time assistant principal at the Freeman Centennial School, as well as special education coordinator, and then was appointed as the principal to the H. Olive School, Olive Day School in 1993. She was there before and was part of the building project and was there to open the doors to the first class of students at H. Olive Day and has provided strong and steady leadership for 30 years from there. Obviously, we will all miss Ms. Balfour. She has become the face of early childhood education in Norfolk, won the Thomas Passios Massachusetts Principal of the Year Award, and really has led with vision around bringing social-emotional programming into the schools way before that was a popular thing to do, and really advocating for educating the needs of the whole child. So we certainly wish Linda the very best as she transitions to this next phase. I'm sure we'll hear more about ceremonies and recognition of her service as we get closer to the end of the year. And we are at this point in the beginning plans, planning stages of coordinating the principal search. Obviously, it's a critical core position for the district. We are looking for somebody with strong leadership capacity, who has experience in the field. We will be doing a full formal search. At this point, we're just getting some pricing from different consultants who might help us with a portion of that search. Primarily, we do envision running some focus groups with community members to really talk about what they envision as critical qualities in selecting a new school leader. We want to do the same with staff. We want to make sure that we're advertising broadly and that we're vetting candidates to make sure that they're licensed and well-qualified for the position. There will be an internal interview committee. So that would be comprised of parents, administrators, teachers from the H. Olive Day School. Our target is to begin advertising early in March, to probably post for three to four weeks, gather resumes, screen resumes, interview the first beginning of April, and hopefully have a candidate appointed by mid to late April. That will allow time for transition, for planning, for coordination, and will allow us to open, ready, and prepared for this next phase of the H. Olive Day School journey. So that's where we are right now. Again, we are just getting pricing and we're starting to put this together. I'll have more information for the committee when we come together on March 1st. So happy to answer any questions on that.
It's the end of an era.
Yes, it is. We've heard lots of, lots of comments and feedback from the parents and the community.
Even my kids.
And Sarah, you had a story. Do you wish to share or no?
I was one of the, I was the first graduating class at HOD. So she was my principal.
There you go.
What's the whoa for over there?
That's very exciting.
And she remembered me when I started working for the library. I went for an open house seven years ago. And she was like, hey, Sarah. And I was like, oh, my gosh, she remembers me. And I didn't get in trouble.
She has an incredible memory and knows students and families very well. So, great. All right. So more to come on this. And I will update you as we get further along and are ready to move forward with the search. Okay. Next item on the agenda today is the preliminary budget overview. So we are in the early stages. We are still working through our budget projections and our budget plan for next year. What I wanted to inform the committee was a little bit about the conditions that are making this budget year fiscally challenging. The first is enrollment. And as we talked about with the space study, we have had steady growing enrollment. We are projecting, at this time, we have 153 students registered for kindergarten for next year. We know we always pick up kids over the spring and over the summer who either newly moved to town or whose parents forgot to register. Last time we were trending around this, we ended up with 168 students when we opened. It's going to be one of our largest classes to come through the district. And in order to appropriately accommodate those students, we are going to have to add an additional session of kindergarten. We have seven classes right now, but we also have a class size policy limit of 21 for our lower grades. So there's no way without adding a class, we could maintain the maximum class size policy numbers. So we have to add a kindergarten. When we add a kindergarten classroom that involves appropriate staffing is the, both the teacher and a paraprofessional. All of our kindergartens have full-time paraprofessional staff. So meeting the demands of growing enrollment is one of our challenges. With that enrollment, when we add a class, we also have to look at the amount of specialists that we have and how we can provide instruction. So we are stretched very thin this year for special subject teachers. They don't have a lot of extra time in their schedule. In order to add an additional art class, an additional music class, and two additional phys ed classes to meet that growth, we are going to have to increase our special subject teachers by point one for art, point one for music, and point two for PE because they meet twice weekly. So there are some enrollment-driven costs around the teaching positions as well as the specialist positions. We also have two positions that were previously grant-funded through ESER. So, well, one was through ESER and one was through a regional grant that we wrote with King Philip, Rantham, and KP. We have a point three wellness director that does, actually brings in tremendous revenue and resources to the district. It's partially a grant-writing position. So she has brought in funding for our MTS committee, MTSS committee for a lot of support for the response to COVID in terms of PPE gear and COVID tests that we distributed, additional training for parents. So she's gotten several grants and has run programs both at the local level as well as at King Philip around supporting students with social media. We, things like, we had Katie Greer. They had another consultant come in. Also, she's done parent programs around anxiety, screenagers. I think some people watched facilitated that night. So she does a lot for all four districts. We need to absorb her salary into the operating budget. And then in ESER funding, based on the needs that we were seeing in the student data and our goals to remediate lost learning, we had added a point five math, a point five math specialist. It was a full-time position. It was only partially funded by the grant. And we added a point five math paraprofessional. Going forward, we aren't going to continue. We're going to be reducing the paraprofessional, but we need to keep the teaching position for another year. We've seen some gains in math, but we need another year to really address some of those missing skills. The other things that are really driving our budget, the federal government has changed the formula for eligibility for some federal grants that we have historically received. We've had Title I for as many years as I've been in the district and long preceding my arrival here. The Title I funds have typically funded a teaching position. We lost Title I last year because the federal government, in the past, Title I and II-A were determined by the percentage of students we have that were considered economically disadvantaged. And that was based on local data. The decision now on federal eligibility is based on federal census data and not local data. So our local data is showing the populations of students that meet that category are actually growing, but the federal census does not capture that. There's no way to challenge that ruling. We just, we were just determined not to be eligible. So we lost Title I. And this year, we're losing Title II-A funds. Title II-A has primarily supported our professional development programming budget. And we'll have to absorb some of that because we carried very little in the operating budget for PD. We fund most of it through, through grants. So enrollment, the loss of federal grants, and the other thing that's really impacting us this year is we also have some significant increases in our special education programs and costs there. And then, as everybody's aware, inflation and materials and supply chain issues are driving some increases in cost. So it's a very challenging budget. On the town side, revenue, the revenue picture is not as healthy as it has been. They are expecting a reduction in prison mitigation funds. They also are expecting a reduction in what they were expecting to see in ARPA funding. We have received direction from the town to try, for all departments, to try to prepare a level service budget. They were asking for a 3% budget. Obviously, for the schools, we can't do that. A 3% budget doesn't get us anywhere close to level service. The budget subcommittee has been working diligently to try to find areas of savings in our budget. We have reduced the district legal fees. We are moving, as a one-time expense, we're moving our cafeteria monitors into the revolving fund. We have a balance in the revolving fund because meals have been free and we've had reimbursement from the government for student meals. So we have some balance there. We'll be able to absorb the salaries of our lunch monitors for one year within the revolving account. We are also, as I mentioned, we're going to reduce and not fill the math paraprofessional position. With those reductions, we are currently at about 5.1%, almost 5.2%. There's a lot of unfunded needs in this. We have for many years, especially as Dr. Tupper was talking about earlier, the growth in special education has paralleled the overall student growth. So our special education department is growing, getting larger. We have more students that we are serving. We have really needed to increase the team chair who facilitates our evaluation meetings, reevaluation meetings, IEP development. We only have a point six person for, you know, all of the students that we are serving there. So we are not bringing that forward this year. We are also very short-staffed on tech support. Recommended ratio is generally one break fixed person for every 250 users. We have two people for about 1,200. So we're short-staffed there. We do not have a full-time secretary. We have one full-time and 1.8 secretary at the Freeman Kennedy. That full-time position was reduced a number of years ago because of budget. We've been trying to bring it back and have not had the opportunity to do that yet. We would also really like to add a special education teacher to support with a number of evaluations and testing that we have so that our teachers are able to focus on instruction for the students in front of them and to reduce their testing workload. Again, we're cutting the math paraprofessional. Ideally, we would keep that. And we would actually had hoped to make that full-time because as a point five position, we've been unsuccessful in securing a candidate. But we don't have that capacity. We were hoping to add some staff to support our MTSS and small group remediation and instruction in the classroom. We would like to make the art teacher at the Freeman Kennedy full-time so that we have comparable positions at both buildings. And we can provide more additional resources and instruction for students. And we've also, for quite a while, wanted to think about bringing back health education. Those are things that we cannot consider at this time with a budget picture as it is. Again, this is a very preliminary budget. We are still looking at some moving parts. We are still in contract negotiations. We are going to suggest that we delay the public hearing on the budget until we have some additional information and factors finalized. We likely will have to be making some additional cuts to this. We likely will have to be making some additional cuts to this in order to balance the budget. We are working closely with the town. And once we have more information, I think we can probably update the committee at the March meeting. And then we'll be looking to middle to the end of March for a public hearing on the budget. Again, we want to have the public hearing when we have a really good picture of what the budget will fund. So, happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure Lisa, Midora, or Barry can answer any questions if anyone has any.
I do. I'll do the easy one first. What happens with the wellness director that's shared with Plainville and Rentham, correct? What happens if their school committee decides not to put it in the budget? What happens? Do we keep it?
We could lose the position. I don't see us being able to absorb more than, right now, KP funds .5 of the salary, and then the other three elementary divide the other .5 in three ways. And then we all share a proportional cost of benefits, so that's why it's $22,000. If we lose the position, we will lose more than $22,000 for the district alone in grant revenue that she's bringing in.
I understand that, but have you heard from the other districts?
At this point, it is in all four districts' budgets and has gotten preliminary support. But again, everybody's in the same process of trying to balance their budget. We continue, again, as I said, some things may still be changing. We continue to pursue additional potential grant opportunities. So, if we are able to secure a grant, some of these things might shift back to a grant fund. But we all four need to support that position because currently, it was, we funded it for three years through a regional behavioral health grant, and that grant is not being reoffered.
I just know sometimes the other districts don't always fall in line with what we consider to be...
Yeah. We've been communicating very closely. Again, KP, I mean, DOTS brought in several hundred thousand in KP cares and substance abuse programming.
Amazing.
They're very committed to the position, and I spoke with, both Plainville and Rentham tentatively haven't budgeted at this time.
My next question is for the full-time art, music, or not full-time, sorry, .1 art, music, .2 PE. Would that, are they, would that just be making the current people full-time? Or would you ask someone coming for a day?
That's a really good question. For art and music, we have people that are not full-time that could absorb that in .1. PE, we have all full-time PE teachers. We would have to look for an additional person to pick up the additional classes. But we are also looking at creative ways. We might end up hiring an APE teacher, .1, and then having our current phys ed teachers not be teaching adaptive phys ed to pick up. So, we're working through that and trying to find the best. It's really going to come down to, it's going to be a difficult position to staff.
That's what I was thinking.
So, we're going to have to work around what we can secure for appropriate and high-qualified staffing and then shift the schedule to leverage the strengths of the people we have.
Definitely. And then, you said about, may have to reduce it to five, from the 5%. I mean, you'd have to get rid of a full, I don't, like a full kindergarten class.
We're in the process, I mean, we don't have anything on the expense side that can be reduced because we have reduced and reduced and reduced. And while the supply chains are driving costs up, we're actually, you'll see those reductions in every building expense budget. So, yes, reductions could impact positions, but we have always done the best that we can to protect the instructional corps, to protect the positions as best we can. And again, that's why we're going to hold the budget hearing because it's a little premature. We're still trying to pursue some grant opportunities. We're still trying to work with the town. But again, we don't want to present a budget and then have to make reductions after we've shared it with the public because...
Well, if I was an incoming kindergarten parent, I would be concerned because it could potentially, if you can't fund another kindergarten, we're looking at having a meeting, right, for bigger class? I mean, I'm going down the rabbit hole, but...
Yeah. I mean, any reductions at this point are going to be difficult.
Yeah.
And, you know, we will, we're going to meet and we're going to look at what our potential options are. But again, I don't want people to be panicked because we still are working hard to try to see what we can do. But I do expect that there will be some reductions.
You always do work so hard. It's amazing, but... And my last comment is more about the team chair, you know, just being cut. And I just, working on that side of education, I just know how valuable that person is and how critical they are to the paperwork. Because if the paperwork doesn't get done right and the timelines aren't met, you're in for a whole lot of legal trouble. So, I just hope that the person, whoever is working extra overtime in that position is granted maybe some, I don't know, some other kudos in some way, because that's a hard job.
It is difficult, and right now, it's shared. Dr. Tepper does a lot of team meeting facilitation. That department's stretched really thin.
I know.
I mean, it's stretched really thin. So, but we've been trying to add that back, but again, it's hard to, with the growing needs and enrollment, we prioritize teaching and some special education positions. And our administrators are working really hard to kind of close that gap.
I think I know the answer to this question, but for our multitudes of viewers, we're talking about adding a position into the teaching staff to accommodate an additional class of kindergarten. We're not moving someone up and down. We're not shifting around in the building. Where is that class going to go?
Yeah. Are you highlighting the need for more space?
I'm just wondering what we're going to do because knowing, I've become intimately familiar with the floor plans at HOD, and I'm curious.
So, for next year, we have one year of somewhat of a buffer because we're going from eight to seven second grades. So, we had a small class at second, in first grade that's moving up, so it will likely go in one of the first-grade classrooms. After that, it will be the art room. We don't have anywhere.
Which is the last remaining.
Does the last remaining space.
And what would happen to art in the event that that happens?
It would have to go on a cart and travel like music does, which does...
So, it would travel into general ed classrooms and teachers would go to the wealth of teacher prep space to prep for their classes when that's happening? No, there is no teacher prep space.
No, there's no space. It is a challenge, and it changes the curriculum. When you have to travel with art, you can't do certain projects. You can't do clay and other kinds of things that they do, so it does have that effect.
What about just even children moving? Like, there's behavior problems enough now. They can't move just to get physically out of it. So, but, hey, May 9th, let's go vote.
Just inelegantly making the point.
No, I think it's important, and we've talked about it a lot. Like, we are in a feasibility study because we are at capacity and overcapacity. And I think it's important for the public to know too, when we're, a building project doesn't happen overnight. Like, if we go forward for funding at Maytown meeting, we're still several years away from construction being completed.
Two years out from finishing the building project.
Yeah, if everything goes perfectly.
If everything passes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other budget questions? Okay. And the last item I have for you tonight is the quarterly bullying report. Again, per policy, I report to the school committee every quarter the number of formal reports we've received of bullying and the outcomes of investigations. This past quarter at the Freeman Kennedy, there was one formal report of bullyinging. That was investigated and actually did not meet the criteria for bullying. So, appropriate disciplinary measures were taken. At the H. All of Day School, there were no reports of bullying this past quarter. Okay, and that goes from November through February. Any questions on that? Okay, we have King Philip, I think.
I was sick, so I did not go to the last meeting. And the meeting before that was canceled due to that one snowstorm that we had in the afternoon.
We have three policies to bring forward tonight. Shannon is not here to speak to those, so Sarah, I don't know if you have anything to add. We did first readings of these at the last meeting. I did want to clarify, Jen, you asked a question, and I gave you a quick answer, but I wanted to make sure that I came back to that. So, you were asking about the difference between bullying and harassment. And we talked about bullying being a pattern of persistent behavior with differential empower. It's designed to intimidate. Harassment doesn't have to be a pattern, but it does have to be behavior that is directed at somebody because of their membership in a protected class. And so, protected classes are federally defined. It would be because of gender, race, religion, sexual identity, sexual orientation, ancestry. If it is outside that, if it's just mean behavior, then that doesn't constitute harassment.
That's what I was, and I saw that in the, like, the...
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify for the public because I know it's in your packet and in the definition of the policy. But it is, it's a specific type of behavior. It doesn't have to be a pattern, but it has to meet that criteria.
Thank you.
Sure. Any comments or feedback? We didn't have any changes on harassment of students, nondiscrimination, and nondiscrimination, including harassment and retaliation, last time. Again, these were based on the legal guidance and the model policies from MASCE, so they have been reviewed for consistency with the new regulations. We'll bring them back for a third reading and final vote at the March meeting.
Okay. All right, back on. I know, I got you. All right, so some new items. We have a school partner renewal application from the fan favorite Norfolk Parent Teacher Association, organization, sorry, not PTA, PTO. So, as you know, the PTO does a number of fundraisers and supports the district in a multitude of ways that I cannot possibly even begin to condense, but they include the book fair, the friend directory, spiritware sales, sponsorship drives, yearbook sales, adult trivia, kid trivia, coin wars, bingo night, color fun run, spelling bee. Is that new? I don't think I've seen a spelling bee before. I'd sign up for that. And the holiday light tour. So, they are an integral part of the school community here in Norfolk and have reapplied to be a school partner. So, we would be looking for a vote on the school partnership application of the Norfolk PTO.
And I just wanted to add, Norfolk PTO will be coming to the March meeting just to introduce themselves to the school committee. They do a tremendous amount of fundraising. They support us in bringing in enrichment programming. They support field trips. They just do so much for all of the, for both schools. And it is an all-volunteer organization, so parents are giving a lot of time and energy to try to support us. So, I certainly would support their application for, you know...
April. They're coming in April.
Oh, they're coming in April. I apologize. I forgot because we have a lot happening in the March meeting.
Like a KPD, a KPD school committee.
Looking for a motion from the Freedom Committee.
I moved. I moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on the application of the PTO for school partnership?
Can adults join the spelling bee?
I think it would be, I think we should have an adult-only spelling bee.
Or adults versus kids.
Or adults versus kids. I don't, not with my child, no.
No, thank you.
All right, so that aside, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, wonderful. So, thank you to the Norfolk PTO for all you do. All right, we have the school committee meeting minutes from January 18th to review and approve. Giving a couple minutes to anyone who didn't do their homework. Okay, so then, looking for a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of January 18th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Last item on the agenda, next school committee meeting. This is not up for debate. It is Wednesday, March 1st. AI3 will be there. Be there, be square. We'll do all sorts of things. Is that...
I'm assuming it's fine.
We have three of us. We're good to go. All right, so last item of business, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
No burning need to stay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the meeting is officially adjourned.